We're going to get the meeting started very shortly. You're welcome to move up closer to the front. I know everybody goes to the back. Welcome, welcome. Please take a seat. We're going to get the meeting started. Let's get quiet down a little bit. We will start the meeting. Thank you so much for coming. Really appreciate you coming out tonight. My name is Linda Shaven. I'm the Chair of the... Okay, we're getting flags. Everyone see the first. Yes. Welcome, everyone. Again, my name is Linda Shaven. I'm the Chair of the Dunsborough Disaster Planning and Advisory Committee. We are an advisory committee to our City Council, and our sole purpose is to really work with our community and to get our community prepared for and have a better response to potential disasters and emergencies. We meet on the 4th Thursday of every month, 6:00 PM at City Hall, and we encourage your participation. We do publish an electronic newsletter, and so we would like you to sign up for that if you're interested. You can sign up over there. Mike Delabana, one of our members. I'd like to just take a second to introduce our committee. Again, I'm the Chair. Stephen Cutting, where are you, Stephen? Stephen is the Vice Chair. And Brian Shirley is our Secretary. Brian's one of our speakers. And Mike Delabana. And Paul Blackwell doing the sound tonight. And I'd like to recognize some of our City Council members that are here. We have Bruce Deutsch in the back. He is with the Neighborhood Watch Program back there with Ben and some of our Sheriff. And we want to make sure you are aware that they're here. We encourage you to talk with them and sign up for Neighborhood Watch today. And we also have here Vice Mayor Matthew Bryan is here. If you want to raise your hand. And we thank the City Council because if not for them, we wouldn't have this committee. And we're very excited about the work we're doing. Before we get started, I just want to let people know restaurants are in the back. There are waters on the back counter. We have resource tables for you. Siskiyou County Public Health is here. And the Dunsborough Fire Safety Council. There's a representative from Farmers Insurance. And then the Neighborhood Watch. We have a lot of speakers tonight, so we'll be introducing them as they speak. So we ask that you hold your questions until the end of the program. We will have time for question and answer and a discussion. And again, in addition to our speakers, you'll see on your programs, there are a lot of other experts and support people here. And we will make sure we get them announced as the evening goes on. But if you look on your programs, you can see we have representatives from the Mount Shasta Ranger District and Public Health, as well as many others. And I think the other thing I'd like you to keep in mind as you learn from these speakers is we want to ask you to think about what you can do to be proactive with your family, with your neighbors and friends, and your neighborhood, and our community at large. This community needs volunteers. And we need people to step up and get involved in our Fire Safety Council, in our Neighborhood Watch, with our committee. So as you learn from these experts here, we want me to think about what you can do as well. So with that, I'd like to introduce our first speaker. He's the Chief of the Dunsborough Castella Fire Department. And I think most of you know him. Please welcome Chief Dan Dia.
Thank you, Linda. Thanks to all of you and the presenters tonight for being here to share some of the information or hear some of the information that we're going to share with you this evening. One of the things I'm going to talk about tonight is just where we're at with the fire conditions. So if we had to look back one year and we look at what our stats were for acres burned. So the same period this year, we're way down, obviously. From January 1st, 2018 through September 15th of 2018, the state had 4,518 incidents for wildland fires. And we burned 626,631 acres. The same period this year, we've had 4,173 events, but we've only burned 38,610 acres. The five-year average during the same intervals was 4,487 incidents, but 322,109 acres. So I think a lot of it can be attributed to our past winter. This fall, we had significant... This past winter, we had significant snowfall that allowed the annual fine fuels to go ahead and stay greener longer. They're going to die eventually. But they didn't come into curing until probably late or midsummer. And the live fuel moistures stayed, I think right about now, they're probably ready to burn. So with that, the significant... I got some of my information today off of, it's called NWCG. It's Predictive Services. It's a federal and state, actually a federal organization through the Forest Service that they monitor weather. And they'll get information from the local fire districts and ranger units of just what, how moist our live fuels and dead fuels are. And so in September, we still had, we were above normal for a significant fire potential. And we're almost through it right now, but when we get into October, we're still there. Even though we had some rains that came in in August that produced about 4,000 lightning strikes in Northern California, the fires really didn't amount to too much. There's a few the Forest Service had that they responded to that they were there for more than, you know, a week or so. But very minimal compared to what we've had in the past. Let's see here. So going into October, as I said, our area still is, just for, through the month of October, we're going to be above normal for our significant fire potential. So it's really important, even though that we had that rain in August and potentially this weekend, we may see a rain event, it's really important that we don't lose sight of the fact that we're not quite out of the woods yet. So I know in the North County, they've responded to a few escaped controlled burns already, or illegal burning. And that kind of action, we can't tolerate right now. We could affect a lot of people if something like that got away from us. So with that, I talked about the weather, our fuels and the drought. So this past winter, like down in the Redding area, they ended up with a lot of winter-kill vegetation, oak trees, and this other kind of trees that the limbs broke. Those things are now cured, ready to burn. And around our forest here, I don't know that it's any more significant than it has been in the past, but still, we need to be really watchful for any hazards. I think a fire got started over in eastern Shasta County because somebody was dragging a chain on a trailer. So those actions that are this day-to-day, we still need to be mindful that whatever we do, we could cause a fire. So at the end, we'll go ahead and answer any questions that you may have concerning our fuels and our weather. Thank you. Next is Monty Mendon Hall for PPML.
Good evening. My name is Monty Mendon Hall. I'm the Regional Business Manager for Pacific Powers California Service Area here. And I'm here tonight to talk to you about our mitigation program, our proactive de-energization program that we are doing in compliance with Senate Bill 901. Used to legislation back in 2018 and Commission Rulemaking 8. What that requires us to do as an investor-owned utility is to submit a plan every year as to how we're going to keep up with our facilities maintenance, our vegetation maintenance that we do on a regular basis, and also what we would do in the event of a proactive de-energization event, which I think everybody is more than interested in knowing about. The work that we do behind the scenes with vegetation management. Now, we've increased our clearances from four feet to 12 feet with our distribution, 30 feet to 50 feet with our transmission lines. We're putting a tremendous amount of resource into vegetation management. Conditions that will be found on our annual inspections, depending on what the condition was, we could have up to 24 months to actually repair them. Now it's six months to a year that they've got to be done. So we're putting a tremendous amount of resources into the mitigation piece. But most importantly, as far as planning for a community like Dunsborough, which is in a Tier 3 area, which is between high-fire hazard area, is that we've developed a plan as to how we would go about proactive de-energization in the event certain indices get to where we go through a notification process and ultimately a de-energization event. There are actually five-week-term PDZs in Siskiyou County. And roughly, they're broken out here in smaller sections. I'll go over here in a little more detail. But roughly, we're talking about the Happy Camp area being one of the PDZs. And the other four are adjacent to one another, starting basically from the Weed Airport, south along the I-5 corridor to Castella. So I speak loudly, I'm going to move away from the mic, and I'm going to go over to this little piece of information here to kind of talk this through with the PDZ areas. As I mentioned earlier, and I know this is hard for you to see if you're not close to it here, but as I mentioned earlier, that Happy Camp is the first PDZ area that we have in Siskiyou County. The others are Weed, you can see specifically here, going up towards the airport and south through town, through Vista Drive and that area of south town. This is contiguous with the area that we have from Mount Shasta. This is the Mount Shasta area here. It encompasses the entire community of Mount Shasta, north towards Weed, and then south down towards Dunsborough. How this is actually segmented is by substation and substation circuits. So that's why you see it looking as it does here. Typically, you're going to see a substation around urban areas where you have more population, more industry and commerce and that type of thing. Each of these particular areas have their own substation circuit out of them. So this is the Mount Shasta area here. Dunsborough is this area that you see right here. It goes south toward Castella, out on I-5, up north towards the PDZ that you see, which is Mount Shasta here. And then this other one here is Snowbrush. And Snowbrush is basically named a substation that's up towards the ski hill up in that area on 889 from basically I-5 to basically the ski hill area that we were looking at these PDZs. So once the indices are hit, we would begin to go to a notification process. And those indices are heat, fire, drought index, and the Bosberg Fire Weather Index, which measures humidity and things like wind speed, things like that. So we would monitor these particular indices to get to a certain threshold. Once those thresholds have been met, we would look at these specific areas in particular where we have weather stations on each of our circuits that we have now installed. So we could monitor this data very closely for what looks like on the circuits itself. Once you hit these indices, we would go through a notification process. And that notification process initially would be 72 hours where we would contact emergency services. And we'd say, hey, Jason, we've got indices now that are all lined up. We hit the thresholds here. And when we get to 48 hours, we're going to start notifying our customers. But in the interim, think about who you need to notify with emergency services. Just giving them a heads up is what might potentially occur as far as the energization event. So we notify into 72 hours. We then wait to see what the indices, to see if they hold. If they do, at 48 hours, we start to notify customers. And we notify customers based on what you've told us, how you want to be notified. It could be a phone call to your home. It could be a text message. It could be something on a mobile device, however you want to be notified. So go to our website, update your information if you have it. You can call our number, 888-221-7070. You can tell our customer service representatives how you'd like to be notified in the event of a PSPS before we're terming it. And we would notify you at 48 hours. And then beyond that, we would look to see if the indices would continue to hold. And if they would continue to hold at 24 hours, we would notify you again. At two hours, we would notify you again. And at one hour, we notify you that this is imminent, it's going to happen, and we would go to the actual PSPS. So one of the things that we have been doing, because we had a dry run that we did up in Weed area here a week ago, is we're looking at how we can sectionalize these circuits to minimize the outage. So if you've got an area that's rural, that has a good deal of vegetation and trees and that type of thing, and wind event could be significant for you as fire, as far as fire, we would look at some point to be able to sectionalize that, that part of the line, de-energize that portion of a more rural area, and try to keep the community itself on. So these are some of the things we're going to try to minimize and to get in fact, be towards the community. This is really critical for the Mount Shasta area where you have medical facilities, a hospital and that type of thing. The hospital is located very close to where our substation is located. So the idea was maybe we'll put some insulated conductor between the substation and the hospital to be able to keep that thing for section of town. So these are some of the things that we've worked through. This is a five-year program to get us all the way through it. We're into it one year. This is the first year that we've actually submitted a plan and have actually followed the accelerated program as far as maintenance and vegetation management.
Mic drop.
Mic drop. Couldn't hear me? So with that, I would entertain a question before we do this at the end of the program?
At the end, yes.
Yes, okay, very good.
Thank you very much, Monty. That's good information. I know we'll have lots of questions for you about the public safety power shut-offs. The next part of the program is going to be trying to help us learn about what our resident preparedness should be all about, how we can do our own evacuation planning and prepare for emergencies. So we have a team of folks doing that, and who's going first? Susie, you go first? Okay, I'd like to introduce Susie Brady. She's Information Officer and many other things with Cal Fire District Siskiyou Unit.
Good evening. Sorry, I'm a little short. Can everyone hear me okay? So we're going to talk about how to be prepared yourself. So we like to talk about the six Ps. Has anybody ever heard of the six Ps before? Woo-hoo, we've got three people. All right. By the way, everybody should know about the six Ps. So if everyone has a pen, I encourage you to write these down. The first P is people and pets. So make sure you take care of yourself and your pets if you ever have to evacuate. The second P, sorry, sometimes I talk fast. I'll slow down. People and pets. It's your first P. The second P is papers. What important documents are out there that you need to bring or specific to you? Some that we all have, birth certificates, social security cards, driver's license, marriage license, stuff like that, your important papers. The third P is prescriptions. Not just your medicine, but maybe your eyewear, glasses, contacts. Think about that. If you have an extra pair of glasses, throw those in. The fourth P is pictures. Nowadays, I know a lot of people scan pictures, but we still have those pictures that hang on our walls of our loved ones. I'm guilty of it. They're not scanned, so make sure we grab those. The fifth P is your personal computer or hard drives. And then the last P is plastic. Your credit cards, your money, your ATM card. So those are the six important Ps that we like to make sure that folks learn in case they have to evacuate. But I like to add a seventh P. And that P is plan. It's never too early to plan. It's late when an emergency happens. So let's plan today in case an emergency does happen. How many of you guys know about the evacuations and how they get activated in a wildland fire? The same three that know the Ps. Awesome. All right. Those must be my three best friends. So let me explain how evacuations happen for a wildland fire. So a 911 will come into the sheriff's office or a local law enforcement. They will transfer it to Cal Fire Dispatch. Cal Fire Dispatch will then get the address of the incident and will dispatch the resources that need to go. If it's a forest fire, we'll dispatch the forest. If it's the forcers, if it's a local government's in Dunsborough area, we're going to obviously dispatch Dunsborough Fire, as well as some other agencies around there. Once the first person that gets on scene is called the incident commander. The incident commander is the one that drives the evacuations. He or she is the one that says, we need to evacuate this location because of. The fire is either moving in that direction. He or she knows we're going to have a wind shift. He or she knows there's people in that area. So they're the one that makes the initial start of the evacuations. After that, they call the sheriff's department. Then the sheriff's department is the one who pushes the evacuations. Sheriff Lopie and his team are the ones that start that process of doing the Code Red. And I, Jason Vella from OES, will go into more on that. But that's the process of how evacuations happen. So I hope that was somewhat clear to you guys. I know it's a little confusing. I know when you guys see smoke, everyone gets nervous. I do too. But that's what we're here for, to explain that process to you. So any other questions afterwards, I'll take. But next one, Jason from OES.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Jason Vella, Assistant County Deputy Director, OES, on the Emergency Management for the county. So just a little touch off of what Susie said for Code Red. Basically, that's what I'm here to talk about. So Code Red is our, basically our reverse 911 system that we use here in the county. And to sign up for that, you can go onto the Siskiyou County website and go onto the OES page or Public Services page, and it's on there. So you can either type it up or in the right-hand corner in the search bar on the OES or the Siskiyou County website. And the website is www.co.siskiuc.us. I know it's kind of long. Best thing to do is just Google Siskiyou County, and it pulls up and just click on the link. It's a lot easier that way. So once you get there... For those who don't have a computer, you can call the office. And I was going to get to that, so thank you. Just go ahead and call the office at 530-841-2155. And that's to my office, and leave a message if I'm not there. And I'll get back to you, or a representative will get back to you, and we'll get you signed up. So we can help you sign up if you have any issues with Code Red or if you don't think you're signed up. You can go back onto the website. You have to go onto the county website if you don't call the office, and you have to sign up through the county website. Just do not Google Code Red and try to sign up that way. You will not get the alert messages for Siskiyou County. I can't express that enough. A lot of people said they signed up. Unfortunately, they didn't go through the county website. And it's just the link that way through the system, through our vendor. If you're not signed up for Code Red, you are not going to be able to get the Code Red messages. Even if you download the Code Red app, sometimes the app does not work. They've had issues with the app. I've not had a lot of good luck with that. But any other, if you're signed up for Code Red, you can sign up under your own address. You can sign up for any family member's address. For members that are outside the area, they can come and contact you, and they can sign up there too. You can get text messaging, phone calls, and emails. The thing is, when it does come in from a 911 or from a message from Code Red, there's two numbers that usually comes far. So a lot of people disregard the message, and hopefully you listened to your voicemail because of all the robocalls that have been going out lately. So it's good if you do get that. There is a message when you sign up that you can test the system. It'll call your phone. Make sure to save that number as Code Red so you know that there's a Code Red alert. Because a lot of people, I included, sometimes get those messages, robocalls. So we'll just ignore the message. So please sign up for all of them. It's very good to have all. Most of us have email on their cell phones. So make sure, try to sign that up and make sure to sign up for all aspects possible. So again, I can't stress enough to go to our own website to sign up for the county's website. And the system is dependent on technology. It is just another way, a tool, that we get out there to get the warnings and orders out. And I'll let Sheriff Lopie talk about how that system works when we're doing a warning or order. Sheriff's deputies will be going door-to-door and making sure that the people are contacted. But again, if a wildfire is rapid, and we lose power, and a cellphone tower loses power, guess what? You're not going to get the message. You know, and sometimes these things take a while to get out. We do geographically. So if you do get a message and you know, and you have a neighbor next door. So it's neighbors helping neighbors too, right? Sometimes not everybody's helped up or signed up through Code Red. You want to make sure that you get there and make sure that you notify your neighbor. You know, sometimes, depending how we draw the lines on the map when we're sending out the Code Red, it could be a street designation. So your neighbor across the street might not get a Code Red when you might get a Code Red across the other street. So it's good to be cognizant of, be good to your neighbors, have a good neighbor relationship, and notify them, say, hey, did you know that? You know, this is what's going on. To talk about, a little bit about the planning and stuff, you know, a lot of good checklists, and I've got a good list on ready.gov. You can go on there, make sure to get your checklist and get your plan started. You know, there's, talk about home evacuations plans, just for your general house fire. There's evacuation routes that we talk about, not routes, but evacuations of what to be prepared, what to pack, different kits. There's plans and different kits to carry in your car in case you get trapped in your car. There's a lot of good information on there and good checklist to have on ready.gov. And you can go on our, either our Facebook page or the county website there, or just go to ready.gov too. We all have links to that. So I'll have any further questions after the show about Code Red? Any sign-ups I can get back to?
We'll do questions after. All your questions. Thank you, Jason. Appreciate it. Next up is Brian Shirley. He's a respiratory therapist. He's one of the hospital emergency response team leaders. He works with Dignity Health. And he's also a member of Dunsborough's Disaster Planning Advisory Committee. Welcome.
Thank you very much. And when we talk about disasters, a lot of us are thinking about wildfire because of where we are right now. But we know, living in Dunsborough, there's a lot more things we have to worry about. Trains, pesticides, chlorine gas going down the highway. Many things, right? So when we want to have our plan, we want to spend some time and think about, what am I going to do if I have to shelter in place? What am I going to do if I have to stay in my home for two weeks? That's a lot different than running scared with all your stuff in your truck. So I want you to think some of that stuff through because that's, when you're making a plan, it's not a single plan. Every disaster I've ever been involved in, they're all different. Not one of them was the same. So as a strike team leader, how do I take a medical team to a disaster and know what I'm going to see? I found out in 15 years, there was no consistency. So for you, I want you to be resilient. I want you to think like that. Not just the simple things. Think a little more in-depth, especially when it comes to your medical care. I loved it when he brought up, what happens if the hospital lose power? What happens if a hospital gets shut down? One Ebola patient, guess what? It's pretty tough for everybody to get seen, right? So when you have chronic medical conditions, you need to think, how am I going to take care of myself for at least a week? Okay? No one's coming to help you. You're on your own. No one's coming to fix your O2. You don't have any power to run your O2. If you're a diabetic, you're not going to be able to come up to the pharmacy. So ensure you have insulin. Make sure you refrain from eating carbohydrates and other sugars if you're a diabetic. That's taking care of yourself in those situations so your survivability goes up. If you have kidney disease, how are you going to get down to Redding for dialysis? Wow. That's one to think through. Cardiovascular pulmonary diseases, we all know that you're dependent on that oxygen. You're dependent on those bronchodilators. Some of them are dependent on defibrillators, monitors. So much that you have in your home that you need to keep operational. So you have to start thinking, what can I say to my doc? How do I talk to Partnership? How do I talk to my insurance carrier and say, hey, dude, I need like two weeks of meds all the time? Not just what you're going to give me because Partnership wants to give you a month's supply. I might need an extra two weeks. Why two weeks? Because I'm more than prepared. If the government says one week, I say two weeks. We're in Dunsborough. One week in Atlanta, okay? Two weeks in Dunsborough. Disability, I live with a disabled son, right? So imagine I have to carry him on my shoulders, 120... So imagine, I have to carry him on my shoulders, 120 pounds, just get him in and out of the house, right? What am I going to do with him in his wheelchair when you have to go to, you know, a disaster shelter? What am I going to do with him when I have to move him that fast? What are you going to do with your walkers, your appliances, and everything you need to be safe? What are you going to do when you need that stuff, and nobody at the shelter has it for you? Okay? When you come to a FEMA shelter, I'm sorry, I don't have all your supplies. You're supposed to have them. You're supposed to know your meds, have them with you, and have a supply that's adequate. If you're elderly and you have problems with mobility, or you don't have a vehicle, come up with a plan now. I loved what Jason said about neighbors, man. In this neighborhood, you know, that I grew up in, we still take care of each other. So that's what we have to do individually, is go around, find out who your neighbors are, and find out if there's some that might need your help. Neighborhood watch would be a perfect place for that to occur. Get involved with your local neighborhood watch. Meet people. Talk to people. Go out and socialize. They might be the people that save you when you're burning up, and they're all driving away. If you don't have a vehicle, that's a big problem. Your survivability in a fire, just so you know, goes way down if you're number one, disabled, number two, don't have a vehicle, number three, you're elder, right? Right there, or you live in a trailer park. Those four things, then you are going to probably be the highest probability to die. So if you're one of those things, two of them, get nervous. If you're three, get prepared. If you're four, you better have a plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. All right. We'd like to move to talk a little bit about evacuation operations. Susie talked a little bit about it already, but I'd like to bring up our sheriff, John Lopey, and he's going to work with Bill Linen from the California Highway Patrol, as well as Sherry Reed. But we're going to have John start the discussion about evacuation procedures. Thank you, Sheriff Lopey.
All right. Thank you. Anyway, thanks, Linda, and I want to compliment the city leadership and committee, and Linda, and everybody for putting this event together, because this will help you prepare better for virtually all emergencies. And one thing I want to emphasize, Brian brought up a great point. Although wildland fires are probably the biggest danger that we face, we could face a multitude of hazards, and he's absolutely right. Look at hazmat, hazardous materials on the rails, hazardous materials on the freeway, earthquakes, floods, and believe it or not, Mount Chasta is the second most active volcano along the Cascade Range too. But that's highly unlikely. But, but there's, the fact of the matter is, we have a variety of natural and man-made disasters that we could theoretically face. So keep in mind that we're kind of emphasizing, you know, the fire dangers, but be ready for anything, because you never know. And one thing I wanted to briefly advise you too. Back there, I have Captain Carl Houtman, who's the number-two guy in the Siskiyou County Sheriff's Office, and Ben Wittstein, Sergeant, who is actually the Chief of Police here. And they're great partners in this. It's just not me, it's our whole department as well. And I wanted to tell you that I have handouts. I have 60 handouts over there. And this first handout is a helpful hints for evacuations. And this is actually similar to the one we sent out last year, when we actually had a one-week evacuation warning. Remember, we had the Hertz and the Delta Fire, and the Delta Fire was moving up the canyon, and we were really fearful that that fire could, you know, reach Dunsmere. But you know, one thing that Dan Padilla said was that this year is a lot more favorable because of the weather. I'd like to think a lot of it has to do with the great federal, state, and local partners we have in planning and preparing for these events like fires, and certainly our courageous firefighters at the federal, state, and local level, and great leaders that do the planning to minimize the dangers that could actually be inflicted upon us. So that, that means a lot. It's not just the weather, or the, you know, the fuels and things like that. It's preparation. You're a part of that. And I think you're the most important part of this presentation tonight, is the citizens, because you're going to make it happen. Your cooperation, and the fact that you're here and willing to learn more, even from what happened last year, is commendable to you and for you, and thank you very much for doing that. But this first handout, it helpful hints, I'm not going to go through it all, I'll let you read it. But the first issue, and Susie brought up a lot of great points. I like those Ps, that's pretty good, you know, six plus, plus the one, seven points. That's pretty much what's in this handout, but a similar emergency supply kit. And one thing we emphasized last year when we had that evacuation warning. Now, when something bad or potentially catastrophic happens, the incident command structure that was mentioned by Susie and others, that is actually usually a unified command. It usually depend on what kind of danger this situation is. The fire will be, like fire, fire will be, you know, we'll have a chief in there, or some high-ranking member of the federal and state fire agencies will have law enforcement usually, and sometimes we'll have emergency medical services, or we may have Highway Patrol as part of that unified command. And it's kind of, we make collective decisions, and we collaborate, we coordinate, and we communicate to make sure those decisions are the best for the citizens that we serve. But always have a emergency kit. That's one of the things we said, you know, last year. Hey, have, have those important papers, and have emergency supplies, a first aid kit, food, water. If you have a dog, take your dog with you. Take your cat with you. You don't want to leave it behind. And, you know, think about dog food. Think about food for yourselves. Think about all the medication and all those other things that you need. And one thing Brian mentioned, and Jason hit on it as well, is we really, you really have to be thinking about your neighbors or your family members that may be vulnerable. If you have, if you know of, or you have a disability, and it's going to be difficult for you to evacuate from an emergency zone, then notify someone tonight or later on down the road, so that we can put you on a list, so that we could, the sheriff's office or the fire, we could go out and we could check on you and help you out, especially if you don't have transportation, if you need oxygen, or, you know, you're otherwise disabled, and you're going to be, you know, challenged to get out of your house in an emergency. Let us know, so we can develop that list, so we can focus on those vulnerable populations. If you're a family member, and you're a friend, or you're a neighbor, help out, and take the initiative, make sure that information is reported. I have a list here of what should go into your emergency kit. I have a list here of items to take if time allows. I have some pre-evacuation preparatory steps, like home, there's a home evacuation checklist, like shutting your windows, which reduces the potential fire danger. Remove flammable window shades and things of that nature. Anyway, go down that list and really take it seriously. And then outside, there's some things, like we have fire safe committee member, council member, fire safe, you know, those, those lessons that fire safe councils reinforce are very, very important to make your property safer and less vulnerable to fire. So there's some suggestions for outside mitigation efforts, and then prepare your family. How to prepare to evacuate from a wildland fire. And there's some references here, like a parent's guide for fire safety, you know, and some other references. And then I have a section there, preparing seniors and disabled family members that I mentioned. Please review that. And then on the back, the last page, there's some references there. And also, I even list some important papers, everything from your driver's license to insurance, a deed to your house, medical records, passports, social security cards, those things that Susie was justifiably talking about. And then safeguard pets. One of the things we did last year, and Jason Vella, this, our Deputy Director of OES, Office of Emergency Services for the county, we worked very closely with Jason last year, and he was the guy that was setting up, when we put out that evacuation warning. He was setting up shelters. He was coordinating with our agricultural commissioner at the county level to take care of both domestic and farm animals that had to be evacuated. So we had all those plans in place. He was notifying the Red Cross. He was just putting everything in the works in the event that we had to provide shelter, and we had to have a place to, you know, take your animals, and especially the big ones, like the farm-type animals, like some, some of them may have a horse, or, you know, goats and things like that. So, and he, and he prepared to do that. And I'm going to talk to you, and just emphasize one of the things Jason said, Code Red. We've gone from, a few years ago, where we only had a few thousand people enrolled in Code Red, to now, what is it, 20,000 or something like that? Yeah. And Jason Vella kind of bears a lot of responsibility for that. But almost everybody, almost all the adults in Siskiyou County are enrolled in Code Red. And please take that seriously, because you get alerts, and sometimes we may have a dangerous criminal that we're chasing down Dunsmere Avenue, and we'll use Code Red to alert the people that live in those areas, just to, you know, lock your doors, be alert if you see suspicious people, call it in. So Code Red can be used for any emergency, both big and small, and really behooves you to sign up for that. Jason, is the toll-free number still applicable? Okay. On this handout, there's also a toll-free number. If you have any problems, I would recommend you go through the county website, as recommended by Jason, or call him. But there's also a toll-free number that you can call and enroll. And I'll leave it at that. Also, I've gotten, I've gotten questions from people that said, "Well, you know, I'm concerned, because what's to prevent another Buc County Paradise disaster, Magalia disaster?" Well, you've got a lot of things working for you here, that they didn't have down in Paradise. One is we have a smaller population. Two is we have a great network system of freeways and secondary and tertiary routes. And we also have a great working relationship with our federal, state, and local counterparts. As you recall, last year, because of the construction, we were very concerned about the I-5 construction because of restricted traffic. Well, we actually got with the Highway Patrol and the Caltrans, and they had, they agreed that as the Delta Fire was moving north up the canyon, we were actually, had a plan to shut down the whole freeway, north, probably around Abrams Lane. We shut down the whole freeway, southbound lanes, and we were going to run you out, everybody out, northbound I-5, to facilitate and expedite your evacuation, had we had to issue an evacuation order. So we had all that in the works, and we had outstanding support to that, the CHP, and Caltrans to do that, and we still have that agreement. Now, what would happen, like last time, we had the fire moving up the canyon, we were, management representatives from my agency, sometimes it was me, sometimes it was Captain Houtman, we went to all the fire briefings. They had the command post, they were, the incident commander was working out of McLeod. And we sat in on the briefings, and we were apprised continuously of what the current situation was. Now, based on the situation, based on, you know, and fire, as you know, you know, can spread because of the weather, because of wind, and, and the firefighters did a magnificent job. But there are many, many factors. The heat, the wind, the environmental conditions, all these things enter in, and a fire may stay stable, or a fire may take off. And a couple times, this fire took off as Delta Fire. So, so we, in consultation with our fire partners, is we initiated an evacuation warning. An evacuation warning issued by the sheriff's office in coordination with our fire partners is merely a warning to you. Get ready to go now. Not tomorrow, not two or three days down the road. Get ready to go now. Use this, use these checklists that you'll get tonight, and pack everything up. Pack the kids, the cats, and the dogs, the food, the water, the emergency supplies and medication, the heirlooms, the family heirlooms, your favorite 74 Chevrolet Corvette, whatever you got, and be ready to go. Because as you know, especially fires, can be so unpredictable, that we may have days, or we may have hours, or we may have minutes. So that's a warning to you. Get ready, and make sure your neighbors, and your friends, and your family members are ready. An evacuation warning is just that, just like we did last time. Now, we elected, and also, the evacuation warning was also initiated in coordination, in cooperation with your leaders in the city of Dunsmere. Your mayor, your city council, your fire chief, we worked together on it. Wasn't just the federal, state firefighters, it was your local government. And I think they wisely maintained this evacuation warning for about a week, a little less than a week, because we wanted to make sure everybody was ready in the unlikely event that fire did come up here, come up the canyon, and jeopardize Dunsmere area, and more importantly, the people. So you get an evacuation warning. Now, should a situation exist where there's danger, then we're going to issue an evacuation order. And it was mentioned that we will have sheriff's deputies go out. Sometimes we get our search and rescue. Some members of the posse will go out and help us out. Fire, they're great partners, they'll help us. And we'll try to visit everybody, say, "Hey, there's an evacuation warning." But when there's an order, that's serious business. And follow the checklist, follow the directions, follow, you know, maintain, you know, listen to the radio, watch the TV if it's still on, and certainly monitor those Code Red messages, because they'll be pretty accurate descriptions of what to do. And, and an order means you got to get out. And if we get to your house, and you're one of these diehards, "I will not leave my house." We probably, what we do is we fill out a little form. It has your name, some family contact information, and some other info. So if you die, we know who to contact. But we probably will pass you up and go to the next, next neighbor or resident. But really, when you stay behind, when you're ordered to evacuate, you are potentially not only jeopardizing your own life, but you're also potentially jeopardizing the safety and lives of emergency responders, those brave peace officers, those firefighters, and those emergency medical service personnel. And the best thing you can do is evacuate, to safeguard yourself. The stuff can be replaced, you cannot. So I ask that the floor, please cooperate with the, with both the warnings, but more importantly, an evacuation order should be issued. Because we put a lot of thought into these orders, and that's when, hey, you know what? Your life is definitely jeopardized, or the lives of your family are threatened. Makes sense? All right. And I'm going to just give you a real quick example of what would happen if we had another scenario going up the, you know, going north up the canyon here, off of I-5. I gave everybody a copy, there's plenty of copies of this. Now, this is, this evacuation route gives you a good idea of what kind of evacuation plan we would have for you. They're on the table, I got, I got 60 copies there along with this other handout. And to give you an example real quick, I'll make it quick. If you're a resident south of Bridge Street, travel south to South First Street, continue to Craigview Drive, then to northbound I-5, and move north. Residents north of Bridge Street, travel north to Sherar Avenue, then north to Sacramento Avenue, and then to Dunsmere, to northbound I-5, central Dunsmere. Residents south of Branstad, travel south on Dunsmere Avenue to I-5 North, that's south Dunsmere Avenue, and so on and so forth. Get the, so get one of these. But we had a plan for you. If you, if you know where you live, you had a route. And we were prepared, as sheriffs in the Highway Patrol and partnership with the Highway Patrol, to not only get you out of Dunsmere very, very quickly, but also to evacuate you on the freeway to north to Mount Chasta, or 89, or 97, or weed. the freeway to north to Mount Chasta or 89 or 97 or weed. So, and I'll answer additional questions later, but it all involves preparation, paying attention to what's going on, and following the warnings or the evacuation orders that are issued for the specific emergency. Make sense?
Make sense.
And again, I tell you, the CHP, you know, our other county counterparts, like emergency plane, firefighters, you know, even PG&E, I did put information in PSPS, you've got to be prepared for that because you may lose your power. And that's on that sheet too. Just be prepared. And our EMS responders, everybody is there for you. And I'll take questions at the end, but just be prepared and monitor virtually every form of communication you could get your hands on and more importantly, enroll in Code Red. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff Loeber. I do want to go to Bill Sherry here, but real quickly first, I think Jason wanted to say something really quick about Code Red, just to make sure everybody has the correct info.
So, yeah, I just want to touch base real quick. I did bring a handout over there and on there, there is a new text to sign up for Code Red. It takes you directly to the link and a QR code if you're familiar with those work. You can just use your camera on your phone, look at the QR code on the handout that we gave you and it takes you straight to the link to sign up on your phones as well. One thing else I wanted to touch about is, Brian and Sheriff kind of touched base about it, is our access functional needs, AFN. So if you have people that have those medical issues, you want to make sure that you can go on the county website under the Public Health link and make sure to sign those people up. That is how we created a list that we can notify first responders that we know how to, where those people are. So make sure to go on the Public Health link on the county website to sign up for your access and functional needs people and make sure that when there's an evacuation warning, that's the best time to start getting those people out and, you know, work on a plan. Anybody with access functional needs is going to take a lot longer than an order. When we have the luxury of having a warning, that's the time to try to make those plans and initiate that plan and get those people out. Same thing with large animals. If people own large animals during a warning situation, that is the best time to get those, everybody out as fast as you can and hopefully have plans to back up, know where to take those animals, places to take them in case we don't have something set up because it's going to take us a little bit of time to set something up on the county if it's an evacuation order. So during the warning process, those are the time for AFN people to try to get out and anybody with large animals to try to get those people out. Thank you.
Now, I'd like to introduce Bill Linum, he's lieutenant with California Highway Patrol in the Mount Shasta area. I'd like to give him the opportunity to say a few comments.
So I'm going to make it pretty brief and succinct, but I'm just basically reiterating what Sheriff Loeber said, that in the event that, in the event that we need to evacuate Dunsborough going north and the freeway tends to get log jammed, if that were to occur, especially with the construction going on, we are prepared in cooperation with Caltrans to shut northbound traffic from south of Dunsborough, as far south as we need to make that happen. That way it reduces the number of vehicles that are competing with that same space on the freeway. And then additionally, shut traffic down north of the area and we can move some of that temporary K-rail that is currently in place so that we can utilize what is currently being used for a southbound lane. We can open that up and we can have three lanes going northbound. And then by the Dunsborough grade inspection facility, you'll pop back out there and utilize traffic. So, Sherry, is there anything you'd like to add regarding that?
Hey, up there. So actually, my name is Sherry Ray. I'm the Caltrans Construction Manager for the north part of the state and Siskiyou County and that is included in my area. We have the Dunsborough project going right now and Bill's absolutely right, we do coordinate with CHP as well as the other emergency functions in the area to make them aware of where we are on the project at all times and how they can get through if there is an emergency, including evacuations. So we are prepared for that. And it was my honor, quite frankly, to stand beside a lot of these people in the Incident Command tent and present Caltrans' priorities, which is for the traveling public. In closing the interstate, it's for you all to be aware, if it happens again, our Public Information Officer has up-to-date information on our website on alternate routes that can be taken and what the delays look like on those routes. So you can make the decision on which one you want to try. If you are in an evacuation and you have this potential for evacuating, I just want to stress, like everybody else did, everybody doesn't want to leave at the same time. That's when you have the backups, the traffic jams and everything. So when you get that notice that says you may need to evacuate, be ready, maybe go early, go sooner so that everybody, when the order comes, is not leaving at the same time. And we struggle with that on the car fire, for instance, in Redding. And that one was really, it just happened so quick, nobody really even knew and power went out and people just had to evacuate. So just to be aware that, and when it is closed as well, if you can stay away from the area, that's a preferred, it alleviates the issues for us while we have that area closed. Let's see what else we have. If there is a power shut-off for Caltrans, for our facilities, you're going to see, it's going to get dark at night. We're not going to have our street lighting, for instance. In this area, we don't really have any traffic signals, but in town where you do have traffic signals, those are going to go down. So you need to remember to treat those intersections as a four-way stop. So remember that, remember those basic rules of when the power's off or when the signals aren't working, how you treat those intersections. And be aware that the lighting on our highway facilities is going to be out as well. In the Incident Command Center, it's been my experience that safety is everybody's priorities today. So although you feel passionate about getting back into areas or you think that those areas are safe, everybody in the Incident Command is thinking about the safety of everybody. So it's a shared partnership on how things are going to happen once the emergency starts. And we all have an input in trying to make sure that everybody's safety is considered. So be patient when those things happen. Everybody in the Incident Command is really working for everybody's interests as well as the firefighters who are in there trying to get it all done. That's all I know.
Thank you, Sherry. Lupita, did you want to make a few comments? Lupita with Caltrans as well would like to make a few comments about using social media.
Thank you, Linda. During the car fire, one of the tools that empowered people was Facebook, more than Twitter. Twitter was really helpful for agencies. So here's what I would like to suggest to you. Most of us, Caltrans District 2, CalFire, Siskiyou, the fire departments, the CHP, and many other county and city agencies have a Facebook page. For us as Caltrans District 2, please like it, and let me just tell you why. Most of the agencies, at least Caltrans, went 24/7 to be a link between you, the residents, and anybody outside worried about you. The other thing, Facebook has that feature that you can say, "I'm safe." And the other way you can use it too is that you could say, "I need help," and put it in there. And then I assure you, the PIOs from all the local agencies or at least the main ones will be engaged on that. So Facebook, also tried Twitter, but I do think, and also for the agencies, just as a suggestion based on the car fire, Facebook was incredible, incredibly helpful as the link. And you could send that message if you don't feel comfortable saying it in public, but say it briefly, just say, "I need help, I'm at this address." Somebody during the car fire from San Luis Obispo said, "My parents are in Lewiston in Trinity County, they don't know how to drive." And they happened to send it to us. You know, we did immediately, we called DOT in Trinity County, we called Shasta County, we called everybody basically and said, "Can somebody reach out this address?" And by the time the woman arrived hours later, they were safe, they were already taken care of. So that's, I really, I know some of you don't believe in social media, I assure you, based on the car fire, that as an agency, Caltrans District 2, really saw the benefits of utilizing it during an emergency.
Thank you, Lupita. So we're actually doing really well on time. I think we'll finish the meeting early. I'd like to introduce a couple more people. We have with us Mark Tibido, who's a fire prevention technician with the Shasta-Trinity National Forest. You're welcome to say a few comments or participate in the Q and A.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks again, Mark Tibido from the Shasta-Trinity National Forest and also Public Information Officer on incidents and wildland fire investigator and a number of other things that I do with firefighting for the U.S. Forest Service. And I just want to reiterate the luck that we have in this small town and with our cooperators and our state, local, and federal agencies. It's amazing. It really is really strong and you should feel great that we all work together in such a great capacity to provide for you, the general public, right? That's our main mission, is public safety. Everyone up here today is here because they care about your safety. I'd also like to reiterate the importance of fire prevention when it comes to wildfires in general. This year and each and every year, we should keep in mind that the easiest fire to fight is the one that never starts. And that's, the easiest fire to fight is the one that never starts. So if you can actively engage with your partners and your community members to really look out for things that may cause fires, you know, sometimes those trees do fall and they may be a threat to those power lines or maybe there's somebody that's having a campfire in a dangerous time in a dangerous area. It's really helpful when the general public notifies the officials of any threats or anything that could impact you or your communities. And we really do count on you guys to be our eyes and ears, not only the national force, but even in our own communities. So thank you for your help in identifying those issues and notifying us so we can make the difference. Thank you.
Thank you. And Bruce Deutsch wanted to make a couple of comments on the Neighborhood Watch. Just, we need you to go see him.
So what I'd like to point out is, is that for a long time, Neighborhood Watch in Dunsborough was about six or seven people that showed up every month at the chamber and talked about who the bad people were and how we could get rid of them. And that's not what the Neighborhood Watch is. Right now, we have two purposes. One, to cut it out on crime, but the other one is to connect the neighbors with each other and bring out the sense of the neighborhoods that are a parcel of what we're talking about tonight. So I really encourage everybody, whether you show up at the meetings or not, to do one of two things. Either to go to the website for the city, go to initiatives at the top, Neighborhood Watch, and you can sign in and put your name. There's a map there and the idea is to figure out what neighborhood you're in. If you don't have access to the web, you have two choices. You can either go down to the library, Karen there, Spibak will help you with librarian, or you can pick up a form here. My goal is to get everyone eventually in the city connected up this way and that can let us really work on developing the sense of community in each of the neighborhoods that will serve us not only in this time of perhaps a disaster, but also overall in terms of the quality of our lives. So I highly encourage you to sign up in the wrong line or open your, thank you.
Now, I think we're doing well with the time. We might even get out of here early. I think it's kind of warm in the building and I know people may be a little anxious to get out of the meeting a little early. Do people need a break, a five-minute break, or can we just move on with Q and A? Let's move on. Okay. So I'd like to open it up for Q and A. We've got an extra mic so I can pass it around to our experts here to answer questions. I also want to point out just some quick interviews, I mean, some quick introductions that I did not make. We have two people from Public Health here, that's Henry Schnedler and Jonathan Himbert. Thank you for coming. We have Daniel Preliv with the Dunsborough Fire Safe Council, who's a forester that lives here in Dunsborough. You met Lupita Franco from Caltrans. And we have Kimberly Goncalves, who is a new farmer's insurance agent here in Dunsborough, and she has some fire safe information for her safety. And I really want to take a moment to thank all of our speakers for taking the time to come out today. You know, all of you know how important these folks are and their jobs. Oh, and I'm sorry, I didn't, can Lupita, can you help me with that?
Nicole Mallory.
Nicole Mallory from Caltrans. Okay, she's one of the resident engineers for the Dunsborough Project. Ah, she's in charge. Mallory's in charge. No, Nicole. All right, so we have some questions. Stephen, I'm going to start with you since you're on the committee and then I'll go to Buck next.
I request that when there's a question, that the answering person can repeat the question.
I would be happy to do so. Do you have a question?
No.
Buck?
If we find ourselves in an evacuation situation, seconds count. I believe all you professionals can communicate with each other via a thing called radio. I have a question, if our cell phone is held, we've lost our power, no television, no internet, is there a local radio station, number AM/FN, and we have a lot of NPR stations, that we can go to? Let's say we're in a vehicle and we're trying to figure, like, over south, what's happening? What is the evolving situation? Is there a station that we can go to?
Did everybody understand the question? Who would like to take that one on?
No problem. So yes, there is. So what we do, and we do those messages, it's called WEO alerts and iPOS messaging. And what that does is goes out on all radio frequencies and that includes your TV stuff and your cell phones. And some of you got the, when the national alert system did their test, when the president did the test on the cell phones, everybody got their alerts, that goes off. So that's how, it also goes that way too. Yeah, it's pretty broad, so.
I'll go to Anna. Did everybody hear that?
No.
Okay. So what Anna is saying is that we're very limited here in the canyon. We only have one radio station and what else? Anna, we don't have 100.1. Okay, we have limited radio stations. TVs don't work when there's a power outage.
All right, Anna, I'm not sure which incident we're referring to that was not on there, the Delta incident. So like Jason said, once a Code Red gets activated, it goes to all of them. So if there was no Code Red, usually there's not. If there is a significant incident in your area, that's part of my job, that's part of Mark's job, is to go on that radio station and to let folks know, "Hey, there is a fire in such and such road, it's two acres," stuff like that. Like Lupita said though, follow those social media sites, that's where he posts that stuff. So maybe you missed it, Anna, maybe, but I'm pretty sure it was on there for the Delta because I did it a couple of times and I know the PIO in Shasta did. So she asked, "What if we don't have social media?" Use the radio. I encourage everybody to get a battery-operated radio. I know that, uh, radio, sorry, a battery-operated radio. If you do not have one, get one. They're pretty inexpensive, you can get them at Walmart, and you can listen to those channels. They also have an AM frequency that will also get those messages out.
Goes on video and nothing else and it goes automatic a lot of times. We go on automatic radio in Mount Shasta and then Wai Rika is too far away, it's way far. So those kind of are.
The scanner works great. We'll deal with this, then we'll move on to the next question.
Yeah, so when we sit down...
Yeah, so when we send out those alerts, it overrides any transmission that they're doing. So when we send out any, any of the emergency alerts, the WEO alerts or the IPaaS alerts, no matter what's broadcasting, it's an emergency alert, it overrides everything that they use.
Another thing, Anna, and all of the participants here, is we make every effort when there's either a warning, and especially when there's an order, to get boots on the ground, sheriff's deputies, we may get help with the CHP. We get people out in the neighborhoods, we use our PA systems, we knock on doors, we make every effort to alert you directly, and we try to build in this redundant communications process. So hopefully between code red, these other communications means, and our deputies and other law enforcement partners and fire partners visiting these neighborhoods, you know, making those notifications directly, then we'll, we'll get just about everybody out as safely as possible.
Thank you. All right, so let's, 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 we'll come back to that. Yeah, you can ask the questions. So we're going to go to this question, but we'll come back to the evacuation.
Yeah, this is so, the minute I have to repeat my question. I wanted to know, is, since we had such a horrific fire season in 2018, is there any federal or state funding that has been loosened up to help smaller communities like us with fire prevention? And more specifically, no offense to county units, appreciate what you're doing, but we've all seen the problem when you can't, when we're gridlocked in traffic, not just by construction, but when we have jackmiked trucks. Well, just recently happened when we had to shut down the whole, well, we are dependent on I-5. There aren't a lot of, I mean, I think you said Lupita, we're, Sergeant, Sheriff, sorry, Captain, whatever, CHP, so. So, no, I lost my train of thought, but anyway, the issue is, you said that we have a lot of ancillary, ancillary roads. No, we don't. We are reliant on I-5, and so that's what I wanted to know, if money was available.
So I'll answer the first part of my question, was if there's any grant funding out there. The answer is yes, there is grant funding out there. The state has one called the Prevention Fees, is that correct, Giselle?
There's CPI Prevention, and it has come over, there's the Urban Forestry one, self control, the fuel reduction. This doesn't do anything for the roads. Unfortunately, we don't have any grants that I know of available for road construction and, yeah. We have a lot for fuel reduction, for making yourself prepared, your home is, and taking responsibility and parting your home, that kind of thing, and that's a whole nother subject from the back end.
So there is grants, and now I'll pass it on to the sheriff to answer your road question.
So, and it was a great question, is there grants available? And I think a big shout out goes to the Fire Safe Councils of Siskiyou County, Dunsmere. How many, how many Fire Safe Councils do we have in Siskiyou County now?
There's two local Fire Safe Councils in Siskiyou County, and I represent the Fire Safe Council of Siskiyou County, and we're just a round table for everybody to come together and work together, and we're also a fiscal sponsor, that we've been fiscal sponsors of Dunsmere and many of the other local Fire Safe Councils, put their, their grant.
Yeah, so, so, and my, my point to that was working together with your local Fire Safe Councils, instead of one community member being concerned about one specific area, if you have a group of community members that come together and work together to get the approvals and the process done through your local Fire Safe Council, you're much more likely to get those grants. And the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, that was recently completed for, for Dunsmere and Siskiyou County as a whole, is one of very few like its kind in the state of California, and that's something that you can really leverage to work through your Fire Safe Council to get that grant money, to, to mitigate those fuels.
We said the Fire Safe Council of Siskiyou County got a grant for Dunsmere Community Wildfire Protection Plan, WPP, and also, can you hear me? Also one for the whole county. You can find those and look them over, great maps, great information, great for planning your next fuel reduction project, look in Dunsmere, you have plenty of plans there, it's really awesome. But, go to our website, firesafeciskyou.org, both plans are on there, and I also have cards with our website, if you're interested, you can just use them.
Okay, and who you're listening to is Giselle Nova of the Siskiyou Fire Safe Council. Oh, Fire Safe Council of Siskiyou County. She's got cards that she can pass around. I also want to let you know that the Dunsmere CWPP, is that correct? The Community Wildfire Protection Plan is also on the city website, if you go to the Fire Department, Chief Padilla has that posted on his web, on his page at the city website. But something I would like to add, in terms of, we also have Daniel Prelib back there, Daniel, who is a part of our Fire Safe Council here in Dunsmere, but we need people in Dunsmere. We want to partner with Giselle and the Siskiyou Fire Safe Council, but we also need local people here in Dunsmere to get involved. We need people to step up and get involved in our Fire Safe Council so we can help our fire chief and Daniel write some of these grants. Anna's been involved in it and put a lot of effort into it in the past, and we need a few more strong people that can step up and help with this, this effort. So any, did you want to say something, Sherri?
Yeah, one of the things I want to mention about the, the safe and efficient transportation of citizens on the highways and byways, last year, we actually had a contingency plan for evacuation, and I realize that, yeah, traffic can get jammed up quick, but, you know, one of the suggestions by one of the speakers, like Sherri mentioned it, is that's why we give you an evacuation warning in advance, that if you can get out early, get out early. You don't have to wait till the very last minute. If you have friends or family members in a safe area, lock up your home, take your essentials, your kids, your animals, and evacuate early. Even if we have a mass evacuation predicated on a, an event that moves very quickly, like, look at the car fire and the campfire, just very catastrophic, happened very quickly, primarily because of the winds, and the firefighters had just an impossible situation initially, as did the other emergency responders. But I'll give you an example, we had some real serious problems because of the construction on I-5 with backup, and, and people get on their GPSs and they take these alternate routes. I was jogging on, on North Old Stage one Saturday, and it was like I-5, you know, during, you know, in Los Angeles, you know, the commute traffic. And what happened? I called the CHP, we, we contacted Caltrans, Caltrans allocated additional funds so the CHP can put, can do traffic control, like in Abrams Lake Southbound as an example. The CHP shut down the county road there so people didn't take that Cantor route, right? And we worked together and we greatly mitigated the traffic congestion problems. I called and was sniveling about Labor Day. I said, well, we ought to do this, we ought to do that, are you ready? Well, Bill jumped in there with Caltrans, and, and they did such a great job, we didn't have hardly any traffic on the county roads. And last year, we had a contingency, we were even, we had a plan to shut down traffic southbound in Ashland and northbound in Redding, so that we didn't have any of the normal traffic on I-5 to impede your evacuation. So that's, you know, we try to, we try to be proactive, we try to think of all the contingencies that would facilitate a safe, lawful, and efficient evacuation, and we're not just, you know, starting, you know, five minutes before the evacuation and make these decisions. And we really do try to keep the highways open, and we understand I-5, and I'll tell you, Caltrans and CHP are very sensitive about closing that freeway down, because it goes to Sacramento, and they got, they got public officials screaming at them, hey, the freeway's, you know, closed, and, you know, every minute, there's like a million dollars of commerce that goes down the tubes as well. So, so they're conscious of that, they're, they're great to work with, and I'm confident in any emergency situation, we'll be able to plan effectively to facilitate your safe evacuation. Yes, ma'am?
We were on the way from Oregon, and my sister was the head of us, and my nephew was behind us. We immediately knew that was going on, and we, we both to Dunsmere, we were able to go for stage. So, one of us, we now, one, one used Facebook app, and then the bus app, and so we all got to do the speech, which was, we were representing, we were in the line, we're having all that traffic. So the media has worked.
Right, and another thing is, you know, another thing is, you know why we initiated those countermeasures? Is because new citizens were letting us know, hey, I'm getting a little angry because it can be 15 minutes to get to my house, which normally takes two minutes. And I'll tell you, Caltrans, Caltrans County Roads, the city here was great, and CHP, we all got together, we had a meeting, we all, you know, planned contingencies, so to greatly minimize and mitigate those incidents. Another thing I want to mention real quick that's kind of related, you may be concerned about evacuating, some people say, well, I've got, you know, I've had my home for 50 years and I'm not leaving, I've got everything in my life is in that house. We have a California Law Enforcement Mutual Aid Plan. I am the California Mutual Aid Coordinator for our county, and then we have a regional coordinator, Tom Posenko in Shasta. All, what happened last year for the Klamathon fire, all I had to do, and we also notified Sheriff Posenko to get assistance for a Delta at least planned, is we had 72 California Highway Patrol officers that reported one day to help us up in Horn Brook, and we had 87 members of the California Army National Guard that showed up to not only help facilitate the, you know, the evacuations, but also to provide security for those, for those homes, those businesses, so that you, even if you do have to evacuate, you could feel secure because if we can't do it, we will ask for help. And get that assistance and support to adequately protect your neighborhoods and your valuables, and your houses, your cars you may leave behind, things like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri. We have a couple more questions right here. I'll go to this gentleman and then to you next, and then your third.
I wanted to just add a little to the, to the question on the, how vital Interstate 5 is to us. We recognize that at Caltrans and CHP, we do not close that highway unless we absolutely have to for the safety of the general public. So, for this area, you know, after the Cantor spill, we did come up with a plan, Caltrans, that when we do have to close Interstate 5 in the canyon, we immediately start detouring people onto 89. When we had the fire though, this last summer, the Delta fire this last summer, you normally, when we have to invoke that detour, it's, it's a winter time event usually. Snow or something like that, that we have some accidents that causes to have to close and wrap people that way. In the, in the wintertime, people will typically choose to stay home rather than have to take that extra detour, the extra hour or two to go around Redding, depending on how much traffic. Well, when the Delta fire hit and we had I-5 closed for four days straight, nobody wants to stay home from their summer vacation, and so they all started taking the alternate routes. And there's a reason we have Interstate 5, it's too much traffic to put on all the alternate routes. So we had backups in all kinds of our other towns, you know, I live in Bernie, so it was totally backed up in Bernie. If we had a fire in Bernie in that instance, I don't think the firefighters could get to the town because it was, the traffic was so backed up. So that's where Lupita comes in, and our PIO, and they get the message out to everybody, these are the delays, you know, it was taking up to four hours on what's, on a route that should only be an extra hour. It was taking an extra four hours because there was so much traffic. So, if you don't have to be out and about, stay home or stay where you, where you can because the interstate is extremely vital and it's just too much traffic really to put onto the other routes to handle for very long. So, that's why the CHP, they don't like to close the interstate. It is only for safety reasons if you do.
Hi, my name is Mike, I live down in Lemoine, and I'm here about two nights a week. And anyway, all the homes and properties around my house burned down completely, and mine was not because I do control burns and I make sure that I rake around my house, and I don't see that around Dunsmere. And I was president of the Fire State Council bringing you here, and I see more fire flash fuels around here now than ever. And you don't have to go after them with abatement, all you have to do is take a picture of their house from the street, which is legal, and you put them up at City Hall, or get them, send them through the newspaper, and just show these, and people around here will talk to them. And when we did that before, we got a lot of people, about, I'd say about 75% of people who are having fire hazards. They fixed it. You're not going to stop a fire unless Roseburg controls their fuels and Dunsmere controls their fuels here in town, and I don't see that happen.
Well, actually, we're, we're starting that now, and I have a couple, Bruce wants to comment, but I'd like to give that to our fire chief because we're talking a lot about doing fuel reduction here, and we're getting started on that, so I'm going to give it to the chief right now.
So, right now, in the second reading is our hazardous fuels abatement. The city council has passed, and with that, it'll give me a little bit more bite to my rules and regulations for LELE 100s, as we call them, for defensible space. But I encourage everybody, you know, I'm not going to be coming at you heavy-handed as long as, you know, if I, we, like Mike said, you know, a lot of times, people, neighbors who are concerned about their neighbor that is not reducing fuels around their house or their property, they'll advise me and I'll pay them a visit. And we'll go over the, the 30-foot defensible space, the 100-foot defensible space, and I've actually got a lot of good cooperation from those people that I contacted. If I don't get any satisfaction in a reasonable amount of time, then sure, we can take the next step. And, but that's not the intent of the weed abatement ordinance solely. It's, it's really to go ahead and encourage each one of you to go ahead and take responsibility of your properties. It's not up to the government, it's not up to the city. Sure, we, we have to enforce those rules and regulations, but if you want to be a good neighbor and a good community person, take responsibility of your own property and get it fire safe.
Now, I have, I have two people that have questions, I promise, and you too, sir. Do you still have a question?
This assumes a, this is probably the chair for the CHP. This assumes a southern.
Okay, he's talking about the evacuation plan for Dunsmere.
This assumes a southern event incident, how about one coming from the north or the south?
That's a great, great point, but it illustrates, it kind of reinforces the point I made before. This is based on a most likely scenario, but you've got to be ready for anything, we may be going south. So, you have, that's why you have to be prepared, and that's a great point. This right here may not be the next scenario. And, but, but believe me, our plans, you know, if we have to move you south, we'll move you south instead of north. Great point, and please keep that in mind, we, we could be hit with anything and we may be going in any direction. So, thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you. You must do it.
I think this will be for Jason. So, the words, the words warning and order are the only two notification words, so where does voluntary, voluntary and mandatory come in? That's not used anymore, that's my question.
Correct. So, yeah, with both of us, it is, we don't use voluntary or mandatory, we can't mandatory ask people that. So, right now, California is under a So right now, California is under a new alert and warning system that they are talking about, or we're hopefully going to be standardizing that within the next year or so. But right now, in Siskiyou County, we use warnings and orders. So there's no voluntary, same thing as a warning or a mandatory. We can't mandatory ask you to leave. So right now, under the, there's a new program that we're working with and that hopefully those new warnings and alerts are going to be out soon. A bunch of different things that we're going to be working on for evacuation stuff that's coming from the state, some mandates and things that are going to be coming for us. And once we get those set in stone, we'll be able to put those out to everybody. Same thing with the verbiage, we really want to standardize the verbiage throughout the entire state, which is the best thing that we can do. Because you go to South, to Shasta County, and all they do is mandatory evacuations. So they don't do a warning. So it's very cumbersome to people and it's very confusing to the public. And the state's finally recognized that after all the stuff that's happened lately. So finally, we're getting some, somewhere with that alert and warning system in the state. So we should have something new. But right now, we use warnings and orders only.
So, but when you're explaining it to other people, the warning, you were kind of talking about, if you need more time with animals or your senior wheelchair, you want to leave during the warning.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, if you have any access functional needs, any special needs to help that's going to take a prolonged time, that's the time to go, especially large, large animals because it takes a lot longer to get some large animals out and have a plan to take those animals somewhere.
So that's sort of voluntary.
Yes.
You're not going to be voluntary, but kind of.
Correct, and like the sheriff said, I mean, don't wait for the government to tell you to leave. If you feel unsafe, anytime, feel free to leave and activate your plan and get out as soon as you can. You know, don't wait for the government to come in and say, hey, this is, we're trying to do this. You know, because like we said, the code red is just a tool. I pause is just a tool. Not unless we have time to go door to door, then that's the only thing. You know, if things fail, then unfortunately, technology does. So we try to use the best and all means necessary to alert everybody, try to get the public, you know, at the best we can. Social media is a big thing. Anything that we can and will do, we are going to try our absolute best to make sure the public gets their warnings and orders so we all stay safe.
Yeah, I think we need real clarification on that because I think some people will be waiting for that voluntary after a warning.
Thank you, we'll try to.
Can I ask one more question?
No, I'm going to go to this gentleman right here and then we'll come back to you because he's been waiting a long time.
My question is, what are the federal agencies like the Forest Service, BLM, Caltrans, and the county doing to mitigate vegetation along the roadways and highways? Case the time, the car fire, I need to say no more. There was a fire down at Castella, Southbound 5, earlier this month, I believe was caused by a vehicle in the vegetation. Second thing I will comment, I pay a lot of DMV fees. I pay high state gas tax, there's federal tax in there. Where is that money going? That money is related to vehicles and highways. Can't somebody get the ball rolling to get that money that Governor Brown has down there or now do some, shake loose some of it and trim some of these, clean up whatever agency has these roadways.
Right, that's right. We did it, we did it.
All right, let's, let's.
Two years ago, and they stopped doing it. And then John Thompson, John Thompson retired, and it went all the way ahead. And now the people in vegetation now are not doing investments too hard.
All right, let's, let's, thank you, thank you both for that question and comment. We're hearing it, we're hearing that. We're not, we want to answer your questions.
I can answer from the county portion. So we've already looked into this, the county Public Road Department and us, we've talked about this. We actually have a plan, we already curated a map, Public Works here are creating the map and identified zones within mostly Siskiyou County. Right now, they're southern Siskiyou County, and they're going to start working on those. The problem with some road abatements and sides, and this is, this is not an excuse, this is something that I found out at a recent meeting because this is one of the things that we've been talking about countywide, is so we have some of those egress issues that are, that we're talking about. The problem is, is so each parcel's a setback from the county road of what they have. Each separate APN, each parcel setback is different. I don't know about Caltrans, if that's the same for Caltrans, but for county, it is each parcel. So you could go 15 feet, you know, 50 feet, and then you have 30-foot setbacks. You go another 30 feet and it might be 5-foot setback. That is one of the issues that we're having with trying to get with landowners. We're working with Fire Safe Councils. The governor has New California Hall, if you look up California Hall, has released a lot of funding for this particular issue. And that's one of the big things that we're taking into consideration. So that's one of the things that I know from the county and working with Public Works, that they are doing that North Old Stage, some roads here in Dunsmere, around Mount Shasta. There's a lot of rope that we tried, but the problem, the issue they have is they can't get agreements with the homeowner for those setbacks. Each parcel, you know, has to be assessed and that, it just takes time to do that. Of course, this is a new system that we're doing. So it's a lot of work for those guys to get out there and do that, but they are actively working towards that. And we have created a map so that we can start working that way and making that happen and try to get those roads a little bit safer, a little bit more clearance so you guys have a safer option to get out.
Thank you, and they have census in state land, and we have census, and we cannot go across census in our neighborhood.
Right, just, Andy, you bring up some good points. I mean, you know, clearing the fuels is a priority. One thing Caltrans does for us, they actually pay the sheriff's office, you know, the inmates at the data recording center, they actually pay us. We have a sheriff's work alternative program. And they actually pay us to put inmates on the freeway to clear, to clean up trash, which are combustible. And we probably, we've won awards because this freeway is a lot more aesthetically attractive compared to other portions of I-5, especially if you've made a trip to LA lately. So Caltrans is doing that. I know that there's some abatement going on, on the freeway rideaways as well. But, and the county does have a weed abatement program. Right, right, but the state, like I said, they're probably a little more active up here than they are in other parts of.
They have to do it at six miles, or they have to do it at six miles. Except where, when they got them.
Well, that's something we'll, you know, maybe we could talk about some alternatives. But another thing I want to mention is, we also have inmates that are willing to go like into parks, the city parks, and reduce, reduce fuels by, you know, cutting back to drive, you know, dead branches and trees and things like that. Corporal Frank Ward does a great job in that regard. And I'm going to talk to Dunsmere Dan about maybe some problem areas. We sent some inmates down there to keep them game plan employed. But, and we'll, we'll talk about some other things we can do.
And I don't, definitely I don't have all the answers on that. I work in construction and it's, vegetation management is, you know, John Thompson was wonderful. And we do have people that stepped in when he retired. So our maintenance forces up in this area work really hard to keep the vegetation down. I know recently, they're out doing some here in the recent days, actually. So if there, but if there are specific areas that you have concern, pay attention to what post-mile, those post-mile markers on the side of the road, and you can definitely let us know. You can even go through our PIO department, Lupita, and she'll get with maintenance on handling. I have one more just to point out. Statewide, Caltrans has looked at all of our routes and CalFire. Is there a CalFire? CalFire has identified routes that they want prioritized for clearing. And Highway 44 in Shasta County was actually one of the top 10 routes. Dunsmere was not, didn't make that, didn't make it into the ratings at all. But 44 did, and they are actually already starting some aggressive clearing along that route. And they will continue as the weather gets better so that they can actually cut it and burn it.
I just wanted to say communicating, I just want to say that it is okay to be frustrated and irritated. We get a lot of people that are upset. But I'll tell you one thing I know, and I'm sure all the public information officers know. In solving a problem, it's really important to just say, what is it that you need? And then be specific. And I also want to say this, you know, Caltrans has a group of maintenance workers that work in Mount Shasta and also close to a little bit south, right? They also live here, they are also affected by what happens here. And I do tell you, they try really hard. Now, here's another thing that I think is important to know. All of the agencies, but I can speak for Caltrans. We don't just do whatever we want to do, whatever it needs to be done right away. There are also the process, and here's what I, I would like to commit to you, okay? So can we try again, but we also need a specific request and also we need to really focus, how do we solve this in a way that is not, not just for you? Because there's another person that doesn't want anybody to touch herbs or animals or the frog with the yellow legs, okay? So here's the part that a lot of times the public, and I'm just going to go really quick on this, okay? And if somebody calls and they care about their street, their neighborhood, and that's it, and you better do it now, right? And so we go into trying to see how we solve your problem while solving hers and his and theirs and there's the other one. And so for every agency and especially for Caltrans, it has to be that everybody, it has to be fair to everybody. But just long story short, the people that have been working, that have been working on vegetation are trying, and but let's do this. You may not like it and that's okay, but I just want to say, I'll, I'll take your number again and then we'll commit to try because we are trying, believe me. And many agencies, there's a lot of work that has to be done around that very often the public doesn't know. So, but, you know, your comment, your frustration is not, I mean, is well taken in understanding how you must feel, okay? But give us a chance to, to keep trying.
Thank you.
I just wanted to address the federal side of your, of your comment. And the US Forest Service is dedicated and has a top priority mission of hazardous fuel mitigation around wildland urban interface. And what you're speaking about is right on with that, doing hazardous fuel reduction around roads. We do have agreements and/or processes and land management plans that allow us to do hazardous fuel reduction next to our Forest Service roads. So I-5 and Highway 89, we are currently implementing a hazardous fuel reduction project along Highway 89. If you haven't seen it, go over to McCloud and check it out. That's, it's kind of a long process, right? These things take time because of the amount of people that are involved and the amount of public opinion and research that we have to do in order to make sure that that's the most effective mitigation measure for that piece of land and protecting it for our own generation and future generations.
Is that why you're hoping so much?
At Highway, on Highway 89, when it's, so when that project is complete, it will, it will mock exactly what we're hoping to get when we're looking at shaded fuel breaks. And that means having, having trees that are shading the forest floor while opening up the area for visibility for motorists and for the general safety of wildland fire and coming towards that 89. It'll be a hazardous fuel reduction. And one thing we want to think about when we do these projects, at least for the Forest Service, is having the, the fuels, if it were to be a crown fire, because we have a lot of land in the Forest Service. So if we have, if we have a fire that was a crown fire, we're looking for that to drop down to an area where firefighters can fight that safely and effectively near major, major roadways and areas that are convenient and/or proven to be effective fire line for our firefighters. So, but then you have the, the point of jurisdiction versus ownership, right? So I-5, south of Dunsmere, right at the county line basically, is Forest Service direct protection responsibility. So Forest Service is the first to respond, but we have many private inholdings and then we have the interstate, we have the railroad, we have a lot of cooperating agencies that we work with in order to fight those fires effectively. And fuels mitigation plans go through the same process. We look, we work with our fire, with our partners, CalFire, Caltrans, everyone is involved in these processes. And it's really looking at where we can spend taxpayer dollars to be most effective in protecting our wildland urban interface in our, in our local communities. Because I live right here in Dunsmere too. So I do understand your frustrations and, and I'm sorry, I don't know your name, sir, but I do understand the frustrations associated with, you know, let's just get rid of the vegetation and then we'll all be safe. But there's a lot more that goes into it than just that. Cultural inherited sites, hydrology, threatened endangered species, all these things have to be looked at before any project even starts.
Are there lots of trees, both for, around Dunsmere?
There is Forest Service land here, and there, not much, yeah. And there are private, private inholdings, and then there's city, and then we get into the county. So there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of folks. And I like to think of fire, fire prevention and fire safety as being internal and external threats. And I think the one thing that we can control is our internal threats, right? So us as citizens in our own properties and taking the initiative to really try to clean that up and look at that 100-foot of defensible space and really take that seriously. So we know that, you know, if our, if we have a barbecue, our neighbors are going to be safe if something were to happen. Or, you know, we have a lawnmower that strikes a rock and all of a sudden we have a fire. And that's an internal threat. The external threats, the freeway being probably the main concern in Dunsmere is a very, is a very real thing that are looked at in land management plans and the wildland urban interface is top priority for the US government. Forest Service, BLM as well, I can speak for that. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have another question, sir?
Giselle? Yes. Are there any fuel grants for homeowners or can we see the users grants to help the owners get trees?
Well, Giselle, why don't you come up and talk on the mic? Sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, here. And I, you all right? You don't have to go too far.
There are grants available, there's not enough to cover the whole world. So people have to take responsibility for their own homes. So we tried, we did have a rebate program at one time. We treated 75 homes where we gave $400 if you, if you did yours. It might buy you a chainsaw, it really would include that for whole property. Right now, we've got a whole subdivision of 151 acres. And kudos to the Forest Service, this is where their 89 project, they have granted us some money to work in a subdivision that touches that 89 project to help those homeowners because it's an area of high concern. What needs to be done is you need to go to your wildfire protection plan and see if you are considered a priority. Because there's a lot of people that may be a higher priority in neighborhoods. And so when we go to apply for grants, that's what we have to do. We have to say, this is the highest priority, it's in a plan, and then we can start working with that now. Forest Service has given us the majority of what we do. We've gotten some stuff from PAC Power, we've got stuff from the CalFire. And CalFire right now has the most money for that kind of thing and their grants are open and we're making some plans. I was just talking to one of the battalion chiefs. We're looking at trying to do ingress and egress from Mont Road to Dietz Road up all of those stage, up to 300 feet to either side of the road. We're going to make that, put that into, we've been getting a lot of feedback and that's what people want us to do right now. Because that road is used when the, when the freeway's impacted, people are going down that road. Residents on that road are very fearful of an admission and it's very heavily fuel loaded. And so they're asking, I mean, we've just, over the last year, we've just been really getting a lot of kickback about do something. So we're going to try in partnership with CalFire to get that taken care of if we receive that grant. So yes, you know, and if you have, and Daniel, I don't know, there he is. Daniel's working here in Dunsmere to make application on behalf of y'all. And so he would be the one to talk to about where to go. And he's got access to all the plans so that he can help you decipher what it is. And Chief, work with Chief and Daniel. And, and that's one of the other things, you always have to start working with your partners. One thing, for instance, with CalFire, your battalion chief has to be on board with whatever it is that you want to do. So I think that's Scott Tavallaro for y'all, so you need to get in touch with them, like Daniel or through Daniel, and say, where can we put these grants? Where can we put these monies? And then make a plan, you know. So you might have a Fire Safe Council meeting. We do this often, lay out some maps and start marking up some spots that you want to do your fuel reduction and make the plan as to where you want to make application. plan as to where you want to make application or funding to do that, so, you know? So, I don't know if I answered your question, but.
A partial.
Yeah. Thank you, Giselle. Any other questions? Did you want to speak on the mic?
Well, my question seems rather interesting, but, you know, the homes in Dunsmere are so close together, I'm a literal person, so I'm looking, wow, I have to have zero to pi and zero to thirty, when the houses are like 20 feet apart, and my beautiful garden is five feet deep. So I just want to rip it all up, but some of it, some of it, you know, I'm, so I'm open to suggestions, can I?
Chief, you want to take that, if you might have some other comments?
So no, I wouldn't be advocating that you cut down or take out all your flowers. You know, if you went to native gardens, I'm not, you know, plugging them, but they have some great employees there who'd be able to direct you into more fire resistant vegetation, ground vegetation.
No, my garden's already established, hundreds of them.
Okay, okay, those are just some suggestions. And then, yeah, I mean, like my, my house is five feet away from my neighbor's house. You know, we literally are on the property lines, and I get it, you know, that's, that's what happens. But I can also tell you though, that there is no vegetation that is going to arbitrarily start a fire in between our two, our two homes. But, yeah, there's, when with, when we say, you know, the 100-foot defensible space and 30-foot defensible space, sure, we're talking about certain items, too, no dead trees, you know, within 30 feet of your home, or dead vegetation, period. So if you just remove that, you know, within, in close proximity to your home, then there shouldn't be an issue.
Thank you.
We actually are going close to 8 o'clock now. Another question? Yes.
Is there a specific plan on how to address the people that are on the AFN list, as far as anybody helping evacuate?
Yes.
Good question.
That's why, the AFN list, like people are disabled with special needs, and Jason covered this really well, and Susie mentioned it too, but the fact of the matter is, is it's important to go on the website, report the information, we are compiling lists, and when we conduct evacuation warnings and evacuation orders, we will use those lists to target, you know, those people for special assistance and support, but we also are going to do that in advance. But we need to know who they are, what kind of disabilities they have, where they're located, and then we kind of line things out in advance. We have to, we have to expand those lists so that we know, and we renew those lists continuously. Jason, do you have anything else you want to elaborate on?
No, I know, it's, a good question.
I want to know kind of how it's going to work when it gets in place?
So if there's an evacuation area in that, in that, so the people on the AFN list, and something I'll be working with Public Health with, is that we can look at that list, if they're, when the evacuation place is called, when the IC calls for that evacuation, we can pull up that list and see if there is, there's any AFN people within the evacuation area that we're going to be talking about there. It's just coordination with Public Health, myself, the Sheriff's Department.
Yes, or Fire, yeah.
Another thing is, one of the reasons that Jason and all of us need that information, your city needs the information, is we may have to, for example, Jason may have to plan lock on some special vehicles, because patrol units may be insufficient. We may have to, you know, plan for access at the shelters. We may have to plan for medical assistance from healthcare providers. So that's why we need the information, and there is a plan, but it's not, it's not refined enough, we need to, we need to do, work on. And the thing is, this meeting tonight, we're not going to solve all our problems tonight, but we need this meeting, and we need to keep having meetings, and we need to keep developing our plans and enhance your knowledge and your preparedness, so that we are better prepared in the future. And, and like, you know, Roger was mentioning the railroads, well, we should have the railroad here, because that's an issue. So, we're developing new ideas, and we'll continue to evolve these plans and our preparedness.
Right, and this is a. This is a new plan also, so there used to be an old list, and of course, over the years, it was never up kept, and there's a lot of maintenance and stuff, and we work very close, Jonathan Hemmer is the new emergency preparedness person for Public Health, so he just started, this is his first week, but we're very good friends, and we're going to be working very closely together and doing the emergency stuff and talking about these plans and how they work and integrating it with the Sheriff's Department and other law enforcement agencies and stuff like that. There's a lot of work to do and stuff that we've already started and working on, but this list doesn't go out to the public. I mean, this is an internal list that's kept secret, so we're working a lot of new GIS data too with our GIS version of the county, and also having maps readily available for us. And so, a lot of new technology that we're also playing with, IM with the emergency stuff, and so, just trying to use all the tools that we can use in our toolbox, trying to make our toolbox a little bit bigger to see what we can do, or a lot of more collaboration with everybody.
Thank you, Jason. I want to add a little bit to that before, and we'll take one more question probably, because we're getting close to 8 o'clock. I'm, I'm a retired Public Health person, so I'm so glad Public Health's here and the work that they've been doing, I encourage everybody, if you know someone who's disabled who has functional needs, it's, they call it the AFN form, but it's Access Functional Needs, correct? And it's really for people, seniors who may have mobility issues, it's a big spectrum. If you have someone in your neighborhood, you can go right, you can help someone fill that out, you can go onto the county website to the Office of Emergency Services, and there's probably a link at Public Health, and, and then you can fill that out online. Also, our Community Resource Center has copies of that form, but I also say, fill that out, but I also think that we all have to be advocates in our own neighborhoods. I know for me, and our Neighborhood Watch Captain where I live on Masson Avenue is Paul Blackwell, and we've already started a database, we have our own database, and we got our contact information for our neighbors, and we've identified a couple of 90-year-olds, someone that uses a walker, and we're taking responsibility in our neighborhood, because we have to do that. We have to start taking responsibility, to look out for our neighbors. We are not going to let what happened in paradise happen here. There's no seniors that are going to die here, we're going to get them out safely. No matter what the emergency is, we're going to do our best to try that. But we need everybody to participate in that, we need people to look out for their neighbors. So, that's all I want to add. Do you have any other questions or comments from our great presenters here? One quick question, that's it, and then we're going to close, it's almost 8 o'clock.
This is dealing with Pacific Power and the public safety power shut offs. Who makes the decision as to how early or how late the calls are going out? And are they going to be coordinated with Code Red or not?
Yeah. The responsibility for a public power shut off notification begins with our Vice President over operations. He works with the regulatory group, he works with the weather stations, he gathers information from anybody he can get him from, communicates with the Public Utility Commission as well, and then we begin the notification process.
And where is he located?
Well, he's located in Portland, Oregon is where he's located, yes. But that doesn't really matter where he's located, we have the technology to be able to give you the information, we need to him to make the decision, we have people in the field that can actually carry out the orders. And yes, we are working with emergency services for notification, and we'll be doing our own notifications as well, we are also working with OES to make sure that we don't miss any bases and all the bases are covered.
So is it by phone call or?
It's, as I described earlier, it's how you want to be notified, basically. So if you were to call, let's say, just say you wanted to call our business center, you call them and you say, my name is so-and-so at this address, I would like to be notified via text. They put it in the system, you're automatically notified that way if we ever have a notification. It's how you want to be notified.
Okay, but how soon or how late will we be notified? Because I don't have a computer, but if I had a computer and I was typing up this, you know, big long thing, and he notified me one hour in advance?
The idea is to give 48 hours in advance notice, that's ideally we could do. Now, there could be an occurrence where it would be shorter than that, but the ideal goal would be 48 hours notification. Forty-eight, 24, 12, two, notification. Plenty of opportunity.
Can I add something? If it's really windy, that's a good time to be, am I correct, Mike?
That is one of the indices that we do look at, yes, is we look at the Keach Fire Drought Index, we also look at the Fosberg Fire Weather Wind Indices. Those indices have to match up to a certain threshold before we begin the notification process.
Monty, can you share a little bit, like you shared with me, that you're looking at trying to develop areas in, in our towns that can be hardened spaces?
Yes, one of the things we've done is we filed for a tariff for the California Public Utility Commission to have hardened facilities in areas that would have PDZ. So for example, part of our conversation with Linda was, what about the community center? Okay, can we put solar on the community center? Could we have a generator? Could we have battery backup? Those are the kinds we're looking, kinds of things we're looking to fund in Shasta, Weed, and Dunsmere. So people would have a resource center to go to in the event, we did have an extended PSPS, basically. There would be a place where you could charge phones, you could go in, you could have energy, basically, to do whatever you needed to do, there would be some light foods and, you know, water and things like that, so people could buy.
Thank you. All right, I think we need to close. Thank you, Monty. I think we need to close the event unless anyone has additional comment.
I'd just like to say, thank you very much for the work that you all are doing, I think it's great, and we all owe you all, thank you.
Just to close by saying, thank you for showing up and participating. I know passions can run high, I know people are very concerned. I, I encourage you to attend our Disaster Planning Advisory Committee meetings, which are on the fourth Thursday of every month, although this month it's going to be changed as city councils in, October is changed, so we'll be rescheduling our meeting. But, we encourage you to participate, especially in the Neighborhood Watch Program, the Fire Safe Council, Daniel Prelib, and our Disaster Planning Advisory Committee. Together, we can start making changes in our community to make it safer, and we can do it as a community. Thank you so much for coming.